Good morning, everyone. I think we'll go ahead and get started here, so let's start with Boka.
Okay, Mayor Booing Wilkis.
Present.
Steve Summers.
Present.
Mayor Smith is not here yet. Mr. Walton is due also. Mayor Fine, Marla.
Here.
Mary Al Blue.
Here.
Diane Michael.
Yes.
My fan line is not coming. Lysia Ba.
Here.
Dr. Farrell is not attending. And Katina Walter, she should be struck. Thank you.
All right, we'll have the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved. Michaels.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Do we have any audience participation? You can speak if you want. All right, we'll go again to the minutes. Is there a motion for approval on the minutes?
So moved. Woo. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consolidated reports. Ryan.
So, last month presented on the July financials, but didn't actually request for those to be approved because it wasn't able to get them in by the time that the packet being sent out this time. So, it's time to be for approval of both the July and the August consolidated financials. Going to go ahead and jump in the consolidated for August. Still remain, RPC still has a healthy fund balance. Iser has a million dollar deficit within their fund balance at the end of August, all of which is just reimbursing on the grant that we're still paying collection. Six hundred thousand of that had been received within the first two weeks of September. That's really all valid for August. There wasn't a whole lot of activity or anything to report. Once again, workforce, same thing, operating a deficit, just always on a reimbursement basis.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions for Ryan? If not, is there a motion to approve the consolidated reports?
So moved.
Second.
Smith.
Yeah, she got.
I got the second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, motion carried. List of the bills.
So, no activity to run for seventy-five. Other than that, nothing significant to report on. Not a lot of crazy activity going on right now, so ask if there's any questions, just let me know, otherwise.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to accept and place on file list of bills for August?
So moved. Michaels.
Second. Woo.
All right, any questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, motion carried. All right, we have an action item here with Head Start corrective action plans. And I'll turn it over to Brady.
Good morning, commissioners. I am recommending approval of the attached corrective action plans, which you should have this morning in front of you. These are to correct divisions identified by the Office of Head Start. The RPCEo and Director shared the incidents and follow-up with the governing body and Policy Council. The RPC management team worked closely with training and technical assistance grantees specialists from the Head Start Regional Office of Chicago on the corrective action plans and completed action steps to further increase safety and quality of services. Those actions included reviewing the code of conduct with employees, implementing additional monitoring of the classrooms and getting them to their homes, providing mandatory training on proper lifting of children and also dysregulated children, emphasizing proper lifting in the new employee orientation training, revising the staff interview questions to capture higher quality applicants, adding new procedures regarding lifting of children, revising the family childcare contract, which we felt was really important, providing additional social skills and prevention coaching for family childcare providers, and stressing the importance of active supervision with children and their care. Due to the deficiencies, I am expecting a notice from the Office of Head Start that the program will be placed on the designated renewal system list, which means our program will have to recompete for the Head Start and Early Head Start grant. I am making preparations and have been making preparations to address the DRS. In preparation of the notice and including appealing the decision. So, I am open to any questions that you might have.
How long is the, are we on notice for? Is it like a year, two years?
So, what happens is that if a program receives two deficiencies within their five-year project period, then they would be placed on this designated renewal list. And for us, we are in our fifth year. And if it would have happened, what, in what, September or no, March? If it would have happened in March, we would have been in our first year and it would not have thrown us in DRS.
So, a lot of this changed when Head Start was reauthorized in 2007. Previous to that, Head Start programs were not being placed on recompetition lists if they were, you know, deficiencies or findings or anything like that found by the federal government. Having said that, since 2007, I would say that majority of the Head Start grantees that go through this process retain their grants. It's only those that maybe the feds have particularly fiscal concerns, financial concerns, where the federal government doesn't have confidence that the grantee will be able to handle the finances of the grant, then they basically will defund the agency. So, in the instance of our neighboring agency in Danville that, you know, for many years served Ford, Iroquois and Vermillion Counties, they were not placed on this list, but their issue had to do with financial. And the federal government decided to defund them and they were not eligible to reapply for the funding for a five-year period. And that's why we were able to apply for the funding next door and successfully got it. But we can, I can provide to you the percentage of, to the commission, percentage of grantees that are able to, that have been able to retain their grants once they've gone through this, what is it?
It's a monitoring process.
Yeah.
And we're getting ready to meet with the monitors on Monday. Hopefully, Katina will be able to be present as well as some of our Policy Council members. It's a wrap-up, really. It's a follow-up. They'll review our corrective action plan. They'll look at all of the documentation that we have in place, all of the data that we've collected from our monitoring. And I'm confident that we will make the full corrections as they have requested.
One last thing is that there've been a significant number of incidences in the Head Start network nationally. To the fact, to the point that there are some advocacy efforts with Congress to intervene because coming out of COVID, I think a lot of the behavioral challenges that many programs and probably even schools have been experiencing, we're asking Congress to intervene so that the Office of Head Start, which is within the Department of Health and Human Services, can apply flexibility as we all sort of go through these challenges that we're experiencing within, within our programs.
I think it's also important to note that our program had all of the systems in place. And when we had to meet with the federal monitors, that was not, those were not in question at all. We're dealing with human beings and people make choices. And I think that that's something that the Illinois Head Start Association, the National Head Start Association, as well as the National Community Action, you know, we're trying to express that to the board or to the Office of Head Start that it's, we're dealing with human beings and we can't be with people 100% of the time. So, having to, you know, being charged to ensure that everyone's going to follow the policies and procedures that we have in place, I think that's very difficult. And we, we addressed these individuals quickly. And I feel like we've, we did our job.
The other thing, of course, we can't disclose the names, but the interesting part about the family childcare provider that we ended up terminating, they're still, have their license and they're still operating. So, you know.
I think that the fact that, Brandy, that you did quickly and rightfully act in these situations is, I appreciate that. But also, as the monitoring happens, I think that will provide us with a positive outlook for the monitoring. And so, as a result, you know, you've done the work that you needed to do to help us retain those services for our community, so I appreciate that. And to the point that you were making, Delit, so there, there are just some really significant issues that our childcare providers are dealing with every day in the classroom. And it is a very difficult job. And you have to bring your best self to work in order to be able to deal with those things. So, you know, when, when an employee doesn't, it is, it is heartbreaking to see a child treated in that way. Our employees are dealing with very difficult situations. And anything we can do to help them in that regard, I think, is a positive thing. So, hopefully, the things that come out of this advocacy effort in Congress will help to address some of the really significant issues that some of our, many, all of our providers are facing each day, so.
Thank you. And I, you know, the particular early Head Start employee, you know, she had her degree in early childhood. She was young. And it was an accident. It was not on purpose. It wasn't out of, you know.
Malicious intent?
No.
Yeah.
It was not. So, I think it's, you know, it's a learning for her and something that, you know, we're gonna, we're learning as well. We're taking in, you know, thinking about the applicants that we do have coming into our program and making sure that they're ready for the positions and they're best matched to where they're going to be.
I have one last question.
Diane.
Probably for me, it's a really. Now, taking on Ford, Iroquois and that, do they also come under that umbrella? Are they clean slate because it's a whole different program?
That's correct.
That's great. Thanks.
They treat each of these as different grants.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Any other comments or discussion?
Just to clarify, there's one provider at issue?
Wait. So, now, taking on Ford, Iroquois and that, do they also come under that umbrella? Are they clean slate because it's a whole different program?
That's correct.
That's great. Thanks.
They treat each of these as different grants.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Any other comments or discussion?
Just to clarify, there's one provider at issue?
Wait.
All right, if there is no other further discussion, is there a motion to approve the Head Start corrective action plan?
So moved.
Second.
Michaels.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, motion carried. We also need a second motion here to, or do you have any further discussion or comments on the code of conduct? Or did you have all that kind of wrapped up or is there additional information?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that the board knows that this is, this is a new code of conduct, which was released with the new Head Start performance standards in September 2024. We were, it was important to us to make sure that those were implemented quickly. And with the Office of Head Start, there is, the new performance standards are rolling out with different requirement periods. And with this, the requirement period to implement the new code of conduct standards is October 1st. So, it was important for us to get this through to our board and make sure that all of our employees review it and sign it, as well as our contractors and volunteers.
So, was that something new or was just, just an update on it, so?
They, there was a set of, the Head Start performance standards had a set of code of conduct standards in, in the document. But what they've done is that they've emphasized health and safety. They've emphasized, really detailed out what constitutes abuse. And, and I think it's stronger, it's stronger for anyone who reads it. And there are also consequences to not following the code of conduct, as there always have been, but they really emphasize that in the standards this time. So, it's more explicit in the code.
It's, it's very detailed.
Yeah.
Very detailed.
Well, it's disappointing that we have to emphasize code of conduct with our children, but we have to do what we have to do, so. Any other further discussion or questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the code of conduct?
I'll make that motion, George.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. All right, we will do our division updates, so we will start with Orion.
So, we're going to be talking about some audits slash fiscal reviews that have come through in the last month. So, the first one, IDHS, I think I might have spoke to everyone about this last month, but homeless prevention and random rehousing were being audited under fiscal review by IDHS. They wrapped up their audit on August 22nd and we actually just received a report back from them yesterday. I'm happy to report that there's no disallowed cost or fiscal finding associated with that. And they added approximately $550,000 in association to their review. It was pretty detailed, so one lot of fun. The, the next one, I've got police training on it. So, police training has one grant and then they also receive local contributions. Their grant runs on a 630-year end and the required have a separate audit associated with it, which was also why at one point in time last year, we decided to go ahead and split them out as a separate fund for a separate set of balance sheet and financial statements associated with them. Fiscal's just sent over all of the required information to the external auditor. So, now we're just hearing back from them. And then the last thing, I've been trying to give everyone an update on the county audit and how that's going. Been a lot going on since last month and it's kind of spiraled a little bit. So, I've been working with the auditor's office still to get that out the door. One of the issues I've continuously been running into and having hiccups on over this last month is the reports that I had expected to be able to rely on in order to prepare the financial statements, finding where there need to be updates, changes, modifications to them as I'm going along. As a result, I'm not going to be able to get the statements out the door here with the auditor's office fighting this month. We are anticipating having it out by the end of next month. However, as a result of that, we're also going to be thrown on stop pay as of, huh? I'm sorry.
Three.
Oh, okay. I was looking down. So, yeah, we're going to be thrown on stop pay effective October 1st here. And so what that entails, the first 15 days, we are thrown on what's called a theme lock. And so DCEO will stop all funding associated with our Cognizant Agency, which is them. However, it does allow for us to, basically, one of the state departments allows us to submit an appeal that will allow for us to continue to get laheave, weatherization, CSBG funding through DCEO during this theme lock. So, none of that funding should be impacted during this time. Delit's also worked with the state yesterday and confirmed that that was the case, that they were going to go ahead and take care of that for us. After the first 15 days of being on a theme lock, then it switches over to a true stop pay, which at that point is when they say all state agencies are disallowed from giving us any sort of funding. So, it extends from DCEO to now you're dealing with IDOT, ISPE and any other state agencies that we're getting funding from. And then, there's a memo from DCEO that I could send out and share with everyone here. I didn't announce today, but basically it just gets progressively worse after the first 30 days, 60 days, and then 180 days, so. But I, from working with HOPE and we've been, we're in communications almost every single day or so, we're again expecting the HOPE to come over here by the end of October.
I just, it just hit me was your reporting. One thing that we'll probably need to check with DCEO because we have workforce funding that's also out of DCEO. And I think last time, workforce was not exempted from that. I think these other programs, the override is done because laheave is a, is a health and safety kind of thing. Weatherization is the same, but I remember workforce was not. So, we, we might need to check on that and I'll follow up via email to the commissioners if workforce is affected or not affected.
One thing I've really pushed for with all the fiscal staff and communicated to them is to continue to try to submit for reimbursements as soon as possible and get any sort of, typically, we like to wait to the end of the month to where we've got like a hard set of financial statements to run off of for submitting our reimbursements. I know for like Iser, we went ahead and spaced it off with our payrolls so that way we could get as much of that funding upfront, you know, in anticipation for the stop pay, so.
Can you repeat the programs that will, will still continue funding in the first 15 days?
Yes, so it will be CSBG, weatherization and laheave.
Thank you.
CSBG is the Community Services Block Grant funding. And that goes to fund various initiatives within LISA's division. But we get that funding being that we are, we are the designated community action agency.
Diane?
This just feels like Groundhog Day.
Sorry that you're dealing with this. Sorry, we're all dealing with this.
So, are the issues similar to what they were last time or are there a different set of issues?
I, I think the issues this time stem from the fact that they lost a key employee over there back in June, July. That employee had sent over quite a few of the reports to the auditor's office, or not to the auditor's office, to the external auditor before they had left. I think a few years prior to that, it was more or less a backlog of audits and that was from mismanagement. I'd say primarily from like the deputy and the honor at the time. And so, one of the, I guess, key things, I've gone back and checked like historical audits that have been submitted for the county. County audits used to be submittable a lot of time back in like November, December each year. And the key change that's taken place over this last probably five, 10 years, back in 2017, GATA was implemented as a test run. And then in 2018, they put it in full force. So, instead of us sending over a paper copy to the state, you know, and by the time they finally realize, oh, you're late on your audit, you know, it's already been two, three months and they've found a copy of it and said, well, we would have put you on stop pay, but you got it to us now, so we can't do anything. Whereas with, with GATA, literally, we're just a notification out effective October 1st, but nothing's moved. So, so I think the key change is, you know, the automated process now at the state level that's really putting a, you know, a force on.
Makes sense.
But it's been the same for the last five years.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, yeah, no, it's been the same.
I'll just say that out loud. Sorry, I'm a little bitter about it.
Rightfully so, Diane.
All right, if there's no other further discussion, we'll move on to the next report. Becky.
Great, thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. Including in your package days, the personal transaction report representing the Ohio's citizens and position reassignments from August 11th, 2024 through September 7th, 2024. RPC currently has 210 employees. We are currently hiring for 109 vacancies, which will put RPC at over 400 employees in the near future. The HR department has been very focused on several staffing strategies to fill the 109 vacancies, which are primarily a result of, you know, an exciting venture with the Head Start expansion into Vermillion, Ford and Iroquois counties. We continue to experience positive trends with turnover. As of August, our turnover rate is at 13%. We are still on track to reduce our annual turnover significantly from last year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions today.
Diane?
Stop hand, do you know how many of those vacancies are Head Start related?
I, I think it's 101.
Out of the 109?
Yes.
Could say so.
Yes. I can pull it up, the report at the end of this meeting, exactly, but probably every one.
Page 63 says 100.
Yeah, I think we have an extra one as a strategy. And if I got that 101 right, I'm going to be really proud of myself, so.
That's probably close enough.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions for Becky? Thank you. Excuse me. Brandy, Head Start?
In your packet, these are Head Start, early Head Start management reports for July 2024. If you have any questions about the report, please let me know. This morning, I highlighted where the program is with enrollment. In August 2024, our program received a notice that we were identified as chronically under enrolled in early Head Start and early Head Start expansion for the time period of February 23 to February 2024. The Office of Head Start did not take into account that we made huge gains between September 2023 to present. We are currently appealing this decision with the Office of Head Start as they plan to reduce enrollment and funding in March of 2025. Our current enrollment has increased for these three grants. As of September 23rd, the Head Start grant was 84% enrolled. Early Head Start was 78% enrolled and early Head Start expansion was 99% enrolled. The applications continue to come in and we have a healthy waitlist. Due to home-based staffing that are on leave at this time, we have not fully reached enrollment for the Head Start and early Head Start grants. We are searching for other potential collaborations just to support the enrollment. On August 28th, RPC was notified that we were awarded the grant for Ford, Iroquois and Vermillion Counties.
Before you go to that, Brandy, I'd like to provide some context. So, again, back to the statute, the Head Start Act, which was reauthorized in 2007. Within that, uh, there is a statutory, uh, threshold for enrollment, which is ninety-seven percent. Um, now during COVID, the Office of Head Start, uh, exercised the flexibility or waiver to all Head Start grantees in the country, given the challenges that we were all going through with COVID, not to reinforce that statutory requirement of ninety-seven percent. Uh, many of us, the children, were at home, so we were not providing center-based programming. Um, so that went on during the COVID period. I still say we are dealing with the effects of COVID, but federal government has other views. And so they, um, started to phase in the requirement. Uh, started off with like, I think it was like sixty percent, seventy percent, and now they're requiring everyone to be at ninety-seven percent. This is a national issue. Uh, a lot of grantees are faced with the same issue because staffing has been challenging. If you don't have the staff, you can't fill the classrooms, you can't open the classrooms. We had to go through the process, which we shared with the commission, of having to reduce, uh, some of our slots so that the, the savings from that could be used for, uh, to pay our teachers more. And in the last contract that, um, uh, the current contract that we now have, we significantly increased the, uh, pay for our teachers and, and staff within the Head Start program. That has helped us, the, the percentages that Brandy is sharing with you, that has helped us to get the, uh, enrollment up as we've been hiring on, uh, staff. However, even though that ninety-seven percent is what is statutory required, the Office of Head Start is using some threshold that they have not shared with anyone in the Head Start world. So we don't know if it's eighty percent, we don't know if it's eighty-five percent. Um, and, uh, as Brandy indicated, for one of them, we're at ninety-nine percent, uh, enrolled. So, uh, yes, we are indeed appealing it. Other programs around the country are doing the same. We have also engaged our congressional delegation, and I know the county executive, since he's actually the signatory to the grant, has been copied on, on that correspondence. Um, we have Senator Durbin's office that is fully engaged on this issue, uh, on our behalf. Um, Senator Duckworth's office, we communicated this week, they're fully engaged on this. And so is Congresswoman Potenski's office. Uh, they are communicating directly with the Office of Head Start on this issue. One of the things to share with you, uh, as part of our appeal, is the fact that when we submitted our request to reduce, uh, the slots so that we could, uh, you know, get the savings and pay our staff more. And as you know, we have asked me as a, uh, part of our Head Start program, we had anticipated that we would, uh, hear back from the federal government within, what, three months or so? Uh, it took them eight months to, from us going back and forth with them, eight months for us to get approval of our proposal. That delayed our ability to actually negotiate with the union, get the wages in place and then begin to hire staff. And so that window of opportunity, we missed it because the contract was finally approved in September of twenty twenty-three. And so, um, we asked the federal government to, um, take that into consideration, um, and they, uh, said no. So anyway, we're going through this process. The last thing I'll say on this is, um, Congress is very much interested, uh, in this issue. And, uh, there is a hearing, I, it hasn't been scheduled yet, but, uh, through our national lobbyist, Congressman Bobby Scott, who is the ranking member of, uh, Labor and Workforce, which is the committee that appropriates in part funding that goes to Head Start, uh, is going to be, uh, having, uh, a hearing on this particular issue. And I've been asked, I'm going to be one of three, uh, national leaders that will provide, uh, testimony at the hearing on behalf of not just R P C, but on behalf of Head Start. So just wanted, just wanted to provide that more context to you that this is, um, it's, it's, it's an issue for us, but it's, it's, it's bigger than us, it's, it's affecting the entire Head Start world, so.
Well, at the root of a lot of the problem is a lack of workforce for you. This is really difficult right now to get childcare providers across the board that are qualified.
So on August twenty-eighth, uh, R P C was notified, um, that we were awarded the grant for Erie County and Vermillion Counties. We will officially take over the grant on November first, twenty twenty-four. R P C will have five centers in Danville, Paxton, Gilman and Wazika, as well as six family childcare home providers and, um, pregnant family option to serve three hundred children and pregnant women. Currently, management has been interviewing the current employees and they'll interview external applicants starting tomorrow, Saturday, September twenty-eighth. R P C has attracted over one hundred and fifty applicants. R P C is also, um, meeting weekly, um, with our own management team, um, our consultants, and then also the, uh, leadership, um, that's currently managing the, uh, grant to ensure that transition is smooth for the children and families as well as the employees. Uh, that is all I have to go this morning. Let me know if you have any questions.
Any further questions for Brandy? All right, thank you. Uh, Lisa?
Um, just a couple of quick highlights. Um, I'm going to talk a little bit about some of our work in homeless housing. Um, the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development requires us here locally and across the nation that the homeless service, um, systems use a centralized coordinated assessment system to support housing placements and other interventions for people experiencing homelessness. That requires, that requires us to do a screening. And what we found over a year ago across the nation, a tool that had been used, um, had some racial disparities. So as it was being used, they began to find that had racial disparities. And so naturally, we didn't want to continue to use that tool. And so over the last year, we've been evaluating new tools for use and have identified a new tool, um, referred to as the Place Value Assessment. And just yesterday, we trained our partners across the community and our own staff in using that tool. And then over probably the next three months, we'll be reassessing all a hundred and four households that are currently on the, what we refer to as the prioritization, prioritization list, um, for new scoring. So then whenever there's a housing opportunity specifically for a household that's homeless, that household that has the highest priority need is matched to a housing, um, opportunity. We don't have enough housing opportunities for all of the households. So triage is really what it, what it's about, and that's a nationwide approach. Um, so over the last year, we've been evaluating the system and tools to use and happy to say we've started down that track. LIHEEP, as was referenced, is, um, up and ready to, to go. We currently have a hundred, or excuse me, one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven appointments already scheduled. They will begin on, um, October first. So with those eleven hundred, one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven appointments, um, that's scheduling through October eighteenth. So, um, it's busy.
But that's in our three sites?
Yes, that's across three sites.
Any questions or?
Tammy?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, the, the tool is called Place Value Assessment, is that right? Are all the agencies that refer, um, individuals through the centralized intake for the homeless, are they all going to be using that same tool so everyone's on the same page?
So the system is partners and it's their voluntary willingness to be a partner in assessing individuals for the prioritization list. The other thing that I'll hone into is individuals and families that are in emergency house or, I mean, emergency shelter, this is not required to go into emergency shelter. It's for longer-term housing opportunities. So there's partners across the community that voluntarily join with us and our staff in doing this. So we do have a number of partners, um, that were trained on the place value and will use the place value. Um, and I can send out a list to be here specifically interested in who is.
Yeah, I'd like to know who's, who's partnering on that. It makes sense to use a standardized assessment tool.
And, and I think that's one thing to highlight, you know, one hundred and four households is not the number of homeless households that we have in our area. What happens sometimes is within shelters, folks aren't ready yet to move on. It takes some time to stabilize. So it's not surprising to me that we don't have a one for one, that every single household that's in a shelter is also on the list. That would be ideal, but it's not realistic. But yes, I can put that out.
Thank you.
For LIHEEP, are we in the open enrollment, like, anyone who's eligible for an appointment at this time? Or are we still in a?
It's targeted population. For the first month of, for the first month, they will only, um, be able to schedule for households that are in the target populations who have a disconnect or imminent disconnection.
Okay, that's right.
And then after, after, you know, October.
Anyone else? No? All right, thank you. Rita?
Good morning, everyone. Um, I want to let you know that we have two documents out for public review. One is the Champaign-Urbana Long Range Transportation Plan twenty fifty. Uh, the document was finalized and presented at the Q W S Technical and Policy Committee meetings in September. And after that, it was released for a thirty-day public comment period. It's out in our website and we also have printed documents in several occasions throughout the community. Uh, the intention is we'll be presenting, uh, to several agencies during this time period to receive comment from the agencies. And then on October fifteenth, we'll summarize, start summarizing all the comments to get, uh, them incorporated into the document. Uh, the document will be presented at the Q W S Technical and Policy Meetings in December for final approval. Keep in mind that this is the document that allows us to continue receiving federal transportation funding and needs to be approved and submitted right out by December. The second document is a pro-housing grant. Uh, we submitted this grant last year. Um, and we didn't receive the funding last time. And we had a meeting with, uh, the housing, uh, provider, the, the, the Department of Housing and,
Urban Development.
Urban Development. And the main concern that they had regarding our grant was that we didn't provide enough documentation regarding the, uh, projects that we were requesting funding to cover the gap. And these were infrastructure projects for Champaign and Urbana. Based on that, we reached out to the communities, uh, during Champaign and Urbana. And we were told that we were applying for funding to fill the gap of Bristol Place, Phase Two, uh, that they already covered the gap. Uh, the staff suggested to us to, uh, apply for funding for Phase Three. We reached out to the developer, we never heard from the developer, we never heard back from the staff. And then, uh, this time, we are moving along with, uh, preparing the application just for, uh, the Lierman Place. Uh, the funding was increased, we are requesting seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that project. And we are requesting six hundred, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for doing, uh, housing regional plans similar to the one that was done back in twenty-ten by R P C and other agencies. Then, uh, the draft of the grant is currently available on the R P C website because it's required to have a fifteen-day comment period. And it's available on the website. We are having a public hearing on October tenth and will be submitting the grant by October fifteenth for one point five five million dollars. And hopefully on this time, we sold out the documentation, we'll be able to get the funding.
Rita, is this the same, uh, last year, Illinois organization from Illinois was funded?
Correctly. And, uh, the other piece of good news that I want to give you is that if you remember early in, uh, during the summertime, at the end of the spring, the University of Illinois College of Engineering reached out to us to provide, uh, transportation services using C cards to students, faculty and staff to go to the Illinois Center for Transportation during the summertime. Uh, at the end of the summer, they reached out to us because they were pleased with the service and they extended the contract until December of this year. Uh, the good news beside providing service to faculty, staff and students, uh, to go to that place is that we'll be getting sixty-five hundred dollars, uh, in local match that will allow us to draw down more money that we are currently leaving on the table because we don't have enough local match to provide the service. And my hope is that the service will be regular service and we'll extend the service next spring and then it will be year-round and then, uh, we'll have about fifteen thousand dollars in additional local match to be able to bring more money to the community to provide transportation services in rural areas.
Rita, how much money do we typically leave on the table?
It depends, uh, but it is between one hundred fifty thousand to two hundred thousand.
Really, that much?
Yes. Because we, we don't have the local match.
And what does our local, what is the dollar to match ratio?
Is sixty-five thirty-five.
Okay. So for our, our thirty-five, we get sixty-five or for our sixty-five?
For our thirty-five, we get sixty-five. Yes, yes. And but, uh, there are a lot of limitations for all signing contracts with agencies. Many agencies have talked to us about signing contract with us. But if we sign a contract with, um, any organization, we cannot provide kind of private service, charter services to them. We have to make it available to everyone and not every, not all these agencies are willing to do that. And that's a huge limitation for us to be able to collect local match. And this opportunity with the university was fantastic. Because we just added stop to the current, uh, route. And we changed a little bit the route in terms of scheduling to fit the needs.
Anything on the vehicles there?
Salary. Yeah, we, we are investing a lot of money in maintenance, right? Because we don't have new buses. A significant amount of money.
Just maybe I have a question. What are, so what are our sources of match?
Uh, local contracts. And we have a contract with Rentall to provide services within Rentall that buy one hundred twelve thousand dollars a year. And now we have this contract with the university. We were in conversation with the Champaign School District to provide services for kids that live outside of the urbanized area, but that never consolidated. Then, um, it's difficult.
So two primary sources of match.
Two primary sources of this.
And that's not very many?
Yeah.
All right, any other questions for Rita, comments? That will, um, Justin?
Okay, I'm going to be telling everybody for quick announcements to kind of, or, uh, updates to kind of watch. September was Workforce Development Month. Workforce Development Month is a national time of recognition of local workforce boards and partners in the workforce, uh, system, training providers, economic development, human services. Um, the State Association of Local Workforce Boards, George Workforce Development Month recognizes an individual or business and an innovation in every workforce area. In our workforce area, those awards went to, for business, Clark Lindsay. Um, they're a, um, retirement living facility that believes in training and development and having a positive organizational culture. For the individual, it went to a single mom who went back to school while working full-time to get a certificate, which allowed her to get a promotion in manufacturing. Um, for innovation, it was our local business service team. The local business service team was made up of ten to fifteen local providers, chambers, R P C, community college, et cetera, working together to talk about how to engage businesses, um, as one and, um, working together to talk about how to engage businesses, um, as one, and, um, discussing how to make referrals to each other. So we were recognized for that. So happy Workforce Development Month as it comes to end, and those were three pretty good stories. Um, jumping off that business team idea, the state of Illinois has a five-year grant, um, for apprenticeship expansion. As I've talked to you all before, the two ways that they're expanding apprenticeships is by investing in a, uh, apprenticeship specialist in every local workforce area and encouraging local areas to work on the developing business service teams. Um, so, uh, there's three more years of that grant. And every year, the state with that grant has a boot camp where they invite the eleven grantees to somewhere in the state to talk about apprenticeship specialists and apprentice, or, uh, local business teams. That boot camp was last week, and we attended, um, representing our area, was, uh, Regional Planning Commission and Parkland College, there is ten other areas in attendance. It was two days talking about the ecosystem in every local area, economies, local governments, high schools, EFEs, community colleges, workforce boards, and thinking about how to work together in that ecology. I spoke to the, all the other grantees about developing a local business team. And at the end of the day, when we gathered the breakout sessions for everyone to think through the ecology and stakeholders, and how to identify partners and work together, the state said, "Champagne, you guys haven't figured it out." So they broke us up and they had to go to other tables so we could help them. That was rewarding to work with Parkland and RPC staff and go to other LVS and talk through, hey, this is how you do it. So that was a good time. Uh, we came back from that, and we had a business committee with our workforce board, um, and we did strategic planning, and for twenty-five, uh, for next year, what our business team, uh, committee wants us to focus on, their appreciation of the business committee and their appreciation of, of what RPC's been able to do with business services. And so they asked now is for us to focus on developing a, uh, workforce development study for the region. Uh, there's been a lot of changes since we did the last study, I believe Rita did it in twenty-eighteen. Since then, we've had COVID, SJA, a tech hub, complete changes in work and culture. Uh, just a lot of, uh, uh, we thought more regionally, where people are more interested in having the discussions, not of just Champaign, but also East Central Illinois, maybe even over into Bloomington. So our business committee of the workforce board is local economic development corporations, Parkland, um, some employers, some other folks. And so I think working on a, uh, workforce development study in twenty-twenty-five, and then aligning that with the state's economic development plan, um, is a good idea in the, the sense from that committee is to create stackable wins for our region. What are we doing in workforce development? What does the state want to do in economic development, and how are we working together to get those wins? I think it all makes a lot of sense, should be fun to work on. And if anyone has ideas about where to get money, okay, for consultants to do a plan, go ahead, let me know. Or let the Litzler or Tammy know, because that's what I'll be doing for the next three months or so, is trying to find money for that, because we don't have it sitting through our regular Title I funds. Lastly, one area that we have been working on that needs to, has room for improvement is working with community organizations and helping them build their capacity and better understand workforce development. We've had this discussion with the University of Illinois Campus Community Compact for Social Justice, uh, work group over the past four years. And that work group, our Parkland and the Chamber and RPC and the university, and we've talked about institutionally, we have resources. But what happens is when we meet with the community, the community routinely says, "I wish we had case management for people in poverty," and we have to say, "We do." And they say, "We wish we had tuition reimbursements and supportive services," and we have to say, "We do." And so there's been a lot of work, um, you know, with the community coalition and with local governments like yourself. And organizationally, all of us do work and have partnerships. But through that compact, there does seem to still be areas, uh, room for improvement on how community organizations understand and participate with workforce development. With that in mind, that work group from UI is, um, hosting an event, Voices of the Community, Shaping Workforce Development. That's gonna be a brunch at nine fifteen AM on Saturday, October fifth, um, at the City of, uh, South Room, forty-five East University Ave, Champaign, Illinois. So there'll be a brunch, and then there'll be some sort of discussion about community-based organizations, even institutions, and maybe an opportunity to discuss ideas for bridge building. So looking forward to that, um, event, and we'll continue to, um, find ways to build bridges between CBOs and institutions so we can get, uh, workforce development services to community members quickly. Okay, that's up. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Justin?
If anyone's interested in attending the event that Justin, uh, mentioned, it is open invitation to the community, but they are asking for RSVPs. So Justin, maybe you could share it with the committee or the commission so they can, uh, share it with staffs or, uh, community members you think might be interested in coming. And then you all can, RSVP, it's two Saturdays from now, so it's a bit short notice, but, you know, you get a brunch, so there's that reward.
Might send it to the Litzler, maybe you saw a girl, so you should have it, yeah. Thank you.
All right, um, it doesn't appear that Tyler or Paul is here, so we will, um, go to Tammy.
Mr. Francisco was not able to join us, but we did ask that we get an update to the commission about a recent grant that ICERT was awarded, the Department of Energy's Benefit Program, which is a building energy efficiency grant. This is a one and a half million dollar grant over a three-year period, and ICERT will be partnering with GTI Energy, Seda, and Flexbot, which is a small business developing, uh, robots. And, uh, ICERT's, uh, portion of this, um, grant is around five hundred thousand dollars. An update regarding our ever-evolving search for ICERT space. Um, last month, I reported to you that we were looking at a location of Bloomington Road. It was a ninety thousand square foot facility, so it was too large for our needs. Uh, we did have a, uh, business that was interested in subleasing. However, they have since found alternative space, and we do not have another entity interested. So the, um, ICERT team is, uh, considering other alternatives, one of which is the space adjacent to the Home Depot. Um, it was space that was initially discussed, uh, early in the search, however, the ceiling heights weren't adequate. They toured the facility once, there's a second tour that's scheduled for this morning. There may be some, uh, modification options to their props that might allow for that space to work. So, um, just giving you an update that we're, we're continuing to try and find, uh, ideal space for them to, uh, locate in their new home. And then next Friday is, uh, our meeting for the bylaws committee. So I will be sending out to committee members either today or Monday a draft of the recommended changes to the bylaws. I just wanted to let the committee know that in addition to the changes that we're recommending, um, for kind of a cleanup, uh, and also changes that we've worked with bond counsel on, the state's attorney's office has recommended some changes as well. And Matt Bannett from the state's attorney's office is gonna join us for that meeting to talk about those changes, which essentially will, um, ensure that RPC's bylaws are aligned with state statute and also with the creating resolution and amendments that have been, uh, approved by the Champaign County Board.
All right, any questions for Tammy?
Who's on that bylaws committee?
I believe it's, uh, Mayor Marlin, um, Mr. Summers, uh, who do you want to?
It's mainly, it's mainly the founding.
No, knowing that, Mr. Smith, are you?
It's mainly the charter members.
Okay, well, that was an easy way to answer that.
Any other questions or just discussion? Um, if not, is there a motion to accept and place on file, uh, the program division updates?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, it's the Litzler's turn.
I don't have much. Uh, I think actually this could have been Tammy's report that next month, was it, no, November. November, we'll be bringing the compensation plan, uh, for the board's commission's consideration.
Okay. Nothing else, old business, new business? Is anyone? Um, if not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Have a good weekend.
You too.